Well, if you can go in the correspondence book to page thirty-eight. I doubt that you've all had a chance to read this whole packet of over sixty pages.
Let me interrupt you more, ma'am. Do you even have the right of an easement over who Maluia wrote? That's a private road.
Yeah, we're part of the private road. We've been paying membership for twenty years. We've paid over twenty-one thousand. Yes, we do. The warranty deed shows, not, the warranty deed for the subdivision names are TMK as one of the owners of the property. It's all in your packet.
Did you spend that to the county?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I did give that to the county.
Let me ask you a few other questions.
Okay.
Commercial kitchen. Do you now or in the future plan on choosing a kitchen to prepare food for the public outside of the ashram?
No, only for the retreat participants. And right now, the way we get around that is when we have meals, we do potluck, which churches do all the time.
So you're willing to agree to a condition as a commercial?
We already, yeah, we already have said that. I'm answering your question.
Please don't interrupt.
Excuse me?
Are you willing to agree to a condition as a commercial condition?
Yes.
A commercial kitchen not providing any food outside of the facility? All right. Secondly, do you charge for any services?
We do. Churches do. They charge for Bible camp. They charge for adult daycare. They charge for child daycare. They charge for schools and preschools. They have to pay their ministers and their maintenance people. Yes.
These are all services provided on the property, adult daycare?
We don't do that. We're just saying churches do that.
I'm just asking you the things on your property, what you charge for.
We charge for yoga instruction when people come and stay for three weeks. We charge to teach them, and it is part of our religious practices, Buddhist re-creation across the country.
How about people who live there? Like these?
They don't pay anything.
Okay.
They get a really modest salary, as most people that work for churches do, or nonprofits even.
And how much do you charge for people who stay there for, I think you said, three weeks?
It varies depending. We do work-study and things like that.
And what's the range?
I don't think I need to answer that question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that this is relative, Mark. I'm sorry.
I think it's relevant because...
I don't. And I'd like to keep moving along.
When you say her questions, her questions are, can she practice her religion during construction? Answer, yes, of course you can.
The county has told us we can't.
And one of the conditions is that the public functions, having the public come to the property or inviting the public to the property must cease while you're reading the conditions, right?
And that is actually against federal law. That's against federal law.
That's your opinion?
No, it's not my opinion.
And you, in my opinion, Mr. Malk, that's not in any way say that.
Mr. Van Pernis, I'm sorry.
I think that I have an important question here. Do you intend to not comply with the conditions because of what Mr. Malk says?
We only contracted with Mr. Malk about a month ago, two months ago. I've been talking to them, and we actually hired them to represent us three months ago.
Do you intend to not comply with all the conditions?
I intend to not comply with ones that are in violation of federal law.
Can I finish my question first? Do you intend not to comply with the conditions on your interpretation of this federal law?
I, I can't answer these questions because they're ridiculous.
Okay, I would like to move along because I don't think that's where we are. We're trying to systematically go through objections. Excuse me, please don't interrupt me. Thank you.
Girl Scouts should come over. That's just your freedom to assemble, and, which is the Fourteenth Amendment, and also the First Amendment, which is freedom to practice your religion.
Your girl Scouts don't live at the ashram.
What did you say? You seem very nasty and hostile.
Your girlfriends, your girl's house may come and have their true beings, but they don't live there overnight.
Nor do the people that come and meditate with us once a week.
Like your husband?
Exactly. No, we don't live there. We're trying to retire. We founded the ashram. We bought it in nineteen ninety-nine. My husband's now seventy-two, I'm sixty-five. We're trying to retire and turn it over to these two wonderful people. So we go over on Monday night and teach.
So your violation of twenty years means nothing?
It's not a violation if you read the John Malk. It's just that we need to get a special news permit.
I have played it in detail, and it does not apply. We are not...
Commissioner, Commissioner Van Pernis, hold on one second. Commissioner Van Pernis, this is not a adversarial process. We are processing a permit. You're not here to attack applicants. We're here to discuss what is before us, which is two applications with conditions. So if you're not going to act in a civil manner, we're going to ask you to leave.
I'm sorry? What was your response?
I think that's...
Could you use your microphone?
I think this is a condition. If she doesn't intend to...
Use your microphone if you're going to speak.
If she doesn't intend to comply with the conditions for whatever reason...
Because you're illegal.
That's something we should know.
Okay, I think we're all good. We're working through these conditions. Okay.
Okay, so that was...
Is Spring Capital going to purchase if these conditions are not waived or lessened in the words of all of the requests that applicants are not granted?
Spring Capital has every intention of purchasing these parcels with the zoning that's in place extended. So if you're asking me specifically if one item or two items are changed, are they still going to move forward? My answer is, yes, as far as I know, they have every intention of closing on this sale. If they've been in escrow for almost two years, I think they're actually able to...
I understand that, but there's numerous conditions that the applicant is asking for a way of or reduction of. My question is, is this Spring Capital's requirement?
I would say it's not their requirement. They are supportive of these amendments, and so I can't answer what you're asking because I don't know what you're talking, you got to tell me what you're going to change, what you're going to accept.
All right, let me, let me ask you this one. If the amendments are not granted, the amendments you support are not granted, is Spring Capital still going to purchase?
Are you saying it's extended or it's not extended?
If all the conditions are not granted, the extension, the affordable housing change, the five-year school lot deletion of all of these conditions, and there are many referred to in the application, not including the extension, are not granted, are, is Spring Capital going to purchase?
I would say no, or they would have bought it two years ago and wouldn't have waited so long.
We're kind of speculating here, I believe.
In other words, we're, we're asking what the commission is being asked to do is help facilitate the sale to Spring Capital, correct?
I'll say it one more time, just so I'm clear. Spring Capital entered escrow two years ago to buy these two parcels. One of the conditions of escrow is that the zoning extension, the zoning ordinances are extended. I don't know what else, how else to clarify.
Mark, we're, we're dealing with the applicants and the application, so...
My understanding is that we're not, the commission is not supposed to facilitate a sale by the applicant.
The sale is not a part of the application. Does anybody else have questions?
Well, I have several more questions.
Let me ask you... Mark, 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 please, I want to move the questions around to different commissioners. It's Mike's turn right now. Go ahead. Proceed then. Mr. Van Pernis, I would just like to let you know that I'm not comfortable. I do think that you have a conflict. I think that you've got a personal issue here, and I don't really like the way it's come across so far. I'm just going to remind you that the Code of Ethics requires fair treatment and that all people be treated in a courteous, fair, and impartial manner. And if I feel like that's not happening, or that you go out of that boundary, then we'll deal with that, okay? Can you acknowledge, please?
I believe I followed those instructions while representing the people.
I don't know what instructions you're talking about.
The Board of Ethics rulings?
It says, never mind, that's a whole other thing. Okay. Did you understand what I just said, though?
Well, if you would recite it, please.
I said that I personally feel like, still feel like you have a conflict, and it's based on the way you've acted and spoken to the applicants in the previous hearings. So I just wanted to mention that in the Code of Ethics, it says that all people shall be treated in a courteous, fair, and impartial manner. And if I feel like you are not doing that, then I will take action at that point. You understand that?
I understand that, but I do not believe that perhaps we're asking questions of the various witnesses.
Your line of questioning will be determined. Well, you need to, you need to be courteous. That's why we're all here. We're all here to help the community, okay?
Initially, I would like to go on record to note that the applicant would, we heard the discussion regarding Commissioner Van Pernis, and from the applicant's perspective, cannot help but feel like there's like a personal bias against Mr. Cook. And so that in and of itself should be justification for his refusal from considering these applications. In the alternative, if, and I know that decision has been made that to accept his participation, then we would respectfully request that the chair direct, direct his questions or commentary to on an unpersonal basis, and so that's all they're asking for.
But, I'm sorry, what do you mean by the one person?
I'm sorry?
What do you mean by that? Just so I...
Yeah, specifically, like, you know, if you, you know, look at his email, and, you know, there are two portions that the commissioners have decided to exercise. The first portion, if I were Mr. Cook, I'd feel kind of like rather hurt because it was a personal thing, saying that, you know, he was kind of buttering on bankruptcy and his own income or social security, so on and so forth. You know, I don't think it really like have, like, much relevance to the nature of the application because what you're considering right now is a land use application. You're not screening on Mr. Cook to be a member on the Board of Ethics or any regulatory agency. So I think like those kind of comments are totally uncalled for. Comments relating to, you know, the applicant backstone and support, please, they are definitely germane, you know, to the application, and we would ask that the chair make sure that the comments are limited to the nature of the application and not necessarily who the applicant was or is.
Understood and agreed. Thank you.
If you have any specific questions on the traffic study, I can, you know, go directly to them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Van Pernis?
Sorry. I have a series of questions for Mr. Okinaku regarding Mr. Turk's studies submitted by the applicant. If any of these questions are offensive, please let me know. We say that. Mr. Okinaku, what was your assignment?
My assignment was to prepare a traffic impact analysis report for the Polani Makai.
And were you instructed to study any particular intersections?
No.
How did you select the three intersections you did study?
Well, the study area is based upon the size of the development. Typically, for a small, a smaller project, you would just analyze the access intersections that I've done. And for a larger project, we will take one, one intersection north and the one intersection south of the, of the project site.
Just one intersection each way?
Yes. Now, it could go larger. You know, if we were talking about something like a major resort, you know, we would go further out. But again, this is a neighborhood commercial center with a, with a multifamily residential. So I guess in my opinion, the study area was sufficient.
Okay, your opinion, even though this project would have more people driving in and out than a resort?
Which resort?
Any resorts that you bet you're gonna see, you're not?
Well, I don't know what, how you compare this with another resort. What resort are we talking about?
Okay, forget it. Why was Henry Street intersection that studied?
Can you repeat that? Which intersection?
Henry Street and...
Henry Street.
...Wumano.
Well, generally in traffic, as you get further from the site, traffic tends to dissipate. So when it reaches a level where the percentage drops down to insignificance, you know, we don't, we don't have to study the whole island because one car is going to go to Hilo. You know what I'm saying? So that's basically, we do, based upon judgment and cost, of course. You know, we can't be studying the whole west side of Hawaii, the, the big island for, you know, every project. But no, I did not go to Henry Street because it's located quite a distance from this, this particular intersection, um, site.
You selected the intersection of Queen K and Kukini, correct?
Yes.
Isn't that farther away from the pole site than Henry Street intersection of...
Oh, no, I don't think so. The first intersection south is, see, within a mile. The first major intersection, I think, north of our study area would be in Anika Lua. That, I think, is the bottleneck that occurred, that resulted in the queue that I saw in the morning.
Isn't Henry Street, Queen K intersection closer to the project than the intersection of Kukini and Queen K?
Oh, no, I thought, I thought, it's quite a ways away.
How far away is Henry Street?
Hang on, I'll, I'll Google it for you.
Henry Street's pretty far away.
Yeah. The Henry Street, Queen K intersection?
Yep. There are other intersections between there and the project.
Is the Queen K, Kukini intersection, source of traffic onto Queen K to the project site?
Okay, going back to your earlier question, Henry Street is about two miles away from Puapu Anui Street.
And what's the street address of Queen K? What's intersection?
And if you want to look at, um...
Please tell me.
Uh, Kukini Highway intersection is about a point six miles south of Puapu Anui Street. So it's quite...
When traffic comes down Polani Road and reaches the intersection with Henry Street and Anika Oholu Highway, doesn't all the traffic turn left onto Henry Street?
From Polani, Polani Road?
Polani Road, yes. I'm sorry. I should, I, I should revise my part of questions. Isn't Polani Road, Queen K intersection farther away from the subject property than the Henry Street, Queen K?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Why is the Henry Street intersection not studied?
Again, it's located two miles away from the site.
What's the relevance here, Mark?
The relevance is a slight to the road that does not have left turn traffic at intersection. Polani Road, Queen K intersection does not significantly generate traffic to Queen K going south. Isn't that true, sir?
I have, I have seen that intersection recently, so I can't say definitively.
How about at the time of the traffic study?
The traffic study did not include that, that intersection in the study area.
The traffic study does not include Polani and Queen K?
No.
All the traffic from North Corner coming down Polani Road that goes south on Queen K turns onto Henry Street, correct?
No, I believe some, some of it goes into Ka Lua Town, somewhere it hits toward back, toward the airport.
Mark, I'm not sure what, what this line of questioning is accomplishing. People, traffic comes from all directions, all kinds of streets, lefts, rights. I don't understand why we're...
I'd like to, you may not understand, but I drive those roads every day.
I drive them a lot, too. It doesn't matter.
There's two left turn lanes from Polani Road under Henry Street, correct?
I think there's a single, single left turn lane from Polani onto Henry Street.
You don't believe there's two left turn lanes from Polani going to, turning left onto Henry Street?
There's one.
Yeah, I think it's a single left turn lane, yeah.
And then there's two from Henry onto Queen K Wumano. But what is this...
One turn lane on Polani at Queen K, there's two at Polani, yeah.
Okay. Let's go with that. So move forward.
All right. Let me ask this question. Do you know where the Walmart is located?
Sure.
What street?
Off of Henry Street. No, that, that's Safeway.
Do you know where the largest shopping center and corner is located? In Kukini Down?
Mark, I'm...
Can you give me a store?
Sorry, I'm...
I don't know the name, something...
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't?
No, it wasn't...
Because they're proposing, they're proposing...
Move on to your next question, please.
I think it's, you know, where that...
At the point we're at right this minute, it doesn't matter what street Walmart is on.
Well, makes a difference when they propose development.
What's your next question, Mark?
How many streetlights are presently on Henry Street from Queen K to Polani?
From Queen K to Polani could hit one intersection there.
From Queen K to Polani on Henry Street, how many light, lighted intersections are there?
Well, there's one at Polani, one at Henry Street.
So one on Malo Polani Drive.
Is that the Home Depot?
That's on Queen K.
Or Lowe's.
Mark, move forward, please.
I think I'm entitled to a list of information from this, this slide interruption.
No, we're wasting time on senseless things.
It may be senseless to you, but they're not senseless to the people.
I'm running this meeting, and I feel like we're wasting time. I would like you to move forward past the...
What is the condition?
This line of questioning.
What is the question? What is the condition of Henry Street, Polani Road, Queen K? Is it a Los D or a Los E or something else?
I don't have that information.
You didn't study Henry Street?
No, I did not.
Okay, we're going to move on to another, we're going to stop right here and move on to another commissioner. Mark, go ahead.
Mr. Fuki, is a fair share going to be paid? Fair share imposed by regional ordinance? Did you hear the question?
Repeat the question, Mark.
Is a fair share imposed by regional ordinance going to be paid redetermined?
Unmute Sid. There you go.
Okay. Yeah, so as far as a fair share, what we propose is, it's not just a fair share, it's pretty much like universal to all of the other fair share requirements. What we do is just going to adjust with the value of the fair share per unit and also to allow for fair share credits for improvements such as the new Malcolm Makai Road, and also to exempt any of them on the side, to be exempt from the fair share requirement, which I understand is current policy at this point in time. So we're not asking for any further exemptions on the fair share requirement, normally.
Thank you.
As being made?
Repeat that, Mark.
Can you answer yes or no whether a fair share payment is included in the proposal?
I thought I answered the question. The short answer to that question is yes, there is a fair share component in the proposed amendments.
Are there any other issues?
A question for Mr. Fuki?
Yes, Mark, go ahead.
Since from prior testimony and prior hearings, I understand that development is not going to take place for many years. I also understand that the applicant, the LLC, Civic and Blah, is not going to develop. So what's the rush? Describe Mr. K, Mr. K and getting everything done by July thirty-first and/or getting, going to Land Court right away. Why can't you take that time to do those things?
Go ahead, Sid.
Yeah, I don't understand the Land Court question, but, you know, all I know is that the applicant already has a very solid buyer in terms of solid Spring Capital. But all I know is that the applicant already has a very solid buyer in terms of solid Sprint Capital and understand every no potential buyer would want to purchase a property when he's not there. And that's the reason why Ken was here earlier. And, you know, he would have protested that, yes, you know, subject to the approvals, that Sprint Capital, you know, his plan would be, you know, stand ready and willing and able to do the project. Now, in terms of when actually the project can be shovel ready, it's obviously not going to be within a year, you know, from now because there's so many permits that are required. They have to update the drainage plan, although they did have one. They have to kind of prepare and update the construction drawings for the new Malcolm Makai Highway probably within the project area, let alone like having to come up with a master plan that's got to be vetted and approved by the planning director. So there are like a number of steps. So, you know, I think would be remiss of myself or anybody else who represented next year this time, the project is going to be shovel ready. But I think what's important is like the message that this commission is sending out to saying it's a desirable project. It will provide if developed, you know, like much needed infrastructure and community service, these are the, in terms of rental housing, those kind of things. And then it makes it a little bit more palatable for existing or future investors to look at this island as seeing that, yes, we have a relatively developer friendly island.
Is it because the applicant, Civic and Blah, is not going to be the developer?
I think we made it clear that, yes, Blah and Southwood are not in a position right now to do the development. It's a project that's too large for them and also given the age of the owners, they don't want to, you know, carry on a, you know, financial commitment that's going to stress, you know, in excess of 10 years. Somebody like a development entity like Sprint Capital would be in a better position to do it. If not Sprint Capital, somebody developing.
Do you agree that convictions have changed and infrastructure needs are increased add net of sight of the project since the original proposal in 2005 will be worsening and greater need for the next 10 or 20 years?
Well, I think I would respond in two ways. One is that the traffic study prepared by Mr. Okeneke was reviewed and approved by the State Department of Transportation, not in 2005, but in conjunction with the application before you. So it's fresh. And the other thing too is like, you know, we've seen a lot of developed residential activity on the south side. And so the whole idea behind this project is to have people move closer to towns such that you minimize the long commute that a lot of these people have.
You think traffic, or you think people are going to move closer to town?
Closer to town, and I think that's what the CDP was talking about. Rather more in a cohesive area, not going to sprawl out. If you have it all sprawled out, well, you do exacerbate the traffic condition. But I think a little bit more on a concentric basis as opposed to represent then you may as a pro getting from, you know, I admire solid, but Ken might not.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Traffic's...
Mark, we're taking another break from you and hearing from some other commissioners.
I don't listen any longer.
You just keep talking. You're not...
It's only one more question.
Okay, do your one more question.
Isn't the traffic study dependent on the widening of the highway and/or the construction of the lead drive bypass?
No, it is not.
There you go. Okay, Mr. Vitsic, you're next. Yes, Mark?
Come on, I want to make one thing clear. I respect Mr. Fuki. I admired his work when he was playing director. I even sense my clients there to be presented by him. But as playing director, I don't think he would ever, ever approve this project with all its waivers and delays and zero. I think it's a blot in his record. I think that Mr. Fuki should be embarrassed about asking for approval of this project. I do respect his past work.
Mike, did you have something?
Um, yes, I just wanted to, well, first off, disagree with the previous statement and leave it at that. But keeping it on subject.
The lights changing, traffic not moving, the CH can tell you that. I can't do because I, it takes me hours to get to Ka'ulua off of Henry Street. And we're supposed to represent all the people of Kona. We'll maybe encourage the developers, but we're not here to try to find some way to make it work for the developer, for a multimillionaire developer to make more money. And I also want to say that...
Not appropriate, Mark. It doesn't matter how much money a person has or if they're going to make a profit or they're going to take a loss.
They can strike those comments.
That's not what we're in. It's not why we're here.
I ask you, did you or the staff review the County Property Regime CPR or any amendments there to as part of this application?
Um, yes, thank you, Commissioner Van Pernas. So this CPR was created quite a while ago prior to the county changing its codes to prevent CPR units on agricultural land.
I break you. I said this is legal CPR.
Mark, please don't interrupt her when she's speaking.
So this is somewhat of a, like a grandfather CPR.
Isn't it correct that any of the owners up on Myo'ono Meadows could litigate to stop the use of the commercial activity easement?
That's a legal question.
All right, the other legal question would be, what is the legality of the county for allowing a use that is not allowed by the County Property Regime?
Again, this is John Mukai for the Planning Department. It's not the Planning Department's... I mean, it's a private matter between the condo owners. They can do whatever they want to each other. But don't expect planning to go in and be the arbiter of the CPRs or any of the CCNRs on the property.
But it's going to allow a certain use regardless of not being an arbitrator of the CPR meaning?
That's why they applied for the special permit.
Very good. Thank you.
The applicant willing to provide any improvements on a private road, any improvements at all?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Van, as I mentioned, the applicant would be willing to do so if it's within reason. I think this is where kind of working this out as far as number of folks, guests, what type of improvements, what mechanism would be there, would be a way. So under normal circumstances, when you have a community association such as this that has a road, uh, you know, basically a road association. In other cases, what we've been able to do is, you know, increase those annual road dues for the business number on like per event or person.
I'm not talking about creating association.
Mr. Van Pernas, please stop interrupting. Can you let him finish his thought, please?
As I say, in this case, we don't have that mechanism to make it easy. But as to answer your question, yes, the applicant is willing to make some improvements within reason.
Unilaterally, there's no association. The majority of landowners don't approve this use? So the question is, does Miss Hickey agree to build improvements to the road for the benefit of her property regardless of any association or other landowner?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Van Pernas, I believe, I haven't stated otherwise that she is. I'm just saying it makes it a little more challenging not having that mechanism. But yes, the applicant is willing to work on road improvements or a mechanism to help fund road improvements that are within reason for the activity that they're doing.
Are you talking about association? I'm talking about unilaterally by Miss Hickey.
I'm talking about improvements or a mechanism to fund the road improvements on the roadway, period.
So I take that as she's unwilling to unilaterally improve the road?
That's not an accurate statement.
What road improvements would she be willing to do unilaterally?
I think we're being a little repetitive here.
All right, let me move on to another subject. Uh, this may be for the planner, Ms. Josserson. How many of the improvements, parking, et cetera, are on the common elements of the property owned by numerous, all the owners up there?
To our knowledge, all the improvements would be made, uh, what we commit to is all the improvements would be made on the CPR parcel that is owned by the applicant.
I understand the CPR, but CPR includes limited common elements and common elements which are owned or influenced by persons other than the CPR owner.
Right. I mean, and so we're all pretty aware that this was a quote unquote subdivision by way of CPR. And in these cases, it was an acre parcel that each lot got 20 acres. So each person is allowed to use their 20 acres with, to have their property rights. And so they would have their...
Rather than have serve a bus station, let me ask the Josserson. How many of the elements that you've drawn are on the common elements owned by all the property owners?
To our knowledge, there are none.
Let me ask the testifying specialist who drafted the plans and presented them to us.
All right, Maya, did you want to respond?
Um, yes, Commissioner Van Pernas. My understanding is that all of the parking driveway improvements and the event venue will be located on the limited common element unit one that's owned entirely by the Hickies.
Thank you. So no common elements.
And do all, all persons who have interest in this limited common elements if they joined this application as applicants?
We discussed that earlier, Mark, and I believe it was stated by the Planning Department that that was not, it was determined to not be necessary.
Well, I disagree. I think that Kona can't overcome state CPR.
All right, I'm going to move over to Mr. Tui. Go ahead. Commissioner Van Pernas.
Uh, Ms. Camaro, are you advocating that every agricultural property like this one should be allowed to carry on commercial activities?
Um, Mr. Van Pernas, Ms. Camaro is a staff member at the county and she's our timekeeper today. Ms. Haley is the one that just testified and...
All right, I'm sorry.
I'm hoping you're not going to ask that question to every single testifier, but...
There was this testifier says she's a realtor. And I want to know if she's advocating that all agricultural properties such as this one be allowed to carry on commercial activities?
Uh, as a Realtor, I just want to speak within my area of expertise. So I'm kind of with Zendo on this one. I think it needs to be on a case by case basis. So I'm here testifying today specifically on this case from the information that I have and I know. And I believe that they should be granted the special use permit in this situation. Absolutely. My answer could be different. I don't know if it was a different situation and I had different information, but that's beyond my scope of expertise.
Do you realize that this application violates state land use regulations?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I understood. Do I, can you repeat the question?
Are you, are you aware that this application violates state land use laws?
Um, I am aware that they are doing everything in their power with all the resources they have to come into compliance to not violate any law. And that's why they have my support because I think that's the right thing to do. And it would have been easier for them to act out of compliance. But that's not what they've chosen because that's not the right thing to do.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on. Sorry about that. Commissioner Van Pernas, go ahead and pull the microphone for you, please.
Ms. Chucker, are you aware of the written complaints and objections contained by the other, by other, contained in testimonies of other landowners in the subdivision that this commission has received?
I'm aware that they have received complaints.
Then your statement that there has been no complaints is not accurate?
My understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that prior to Kate and Doug coming forward and sort of telling on themselves, there were no previous complaint. And so the complaints are, were submitted as part of this, this happening right now.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Zendo, correct.
You mean objections as opposed to complaints, correct?
Uh, to, to, point of order, to say that there's complaints is false. To say that there's letters of opposition would be correct. I feel like some of the questioning coming from Council Commissioner Van Pernas is very leading and pushing very much in a certain direction that does not lead to fairness, in my opinion. Thank you.
Commissioner Van Pernas?
Ms. Ma, Ms. Ma, um, you say you've been up and down here over two years. You drive Mau'ohoa to get there?
Yes. I live here and I drive. I commute to come out there. So I drive.
And if you've been up and down there two years in Mau'ohoa, where is the closest fire hydrant?
The closest fire hydrant? I'm not sure.
Do you know where there's any fire hydrants on the road?
I am pretty sure that there are fire hydrants along Holo'a Loa Drive, but I'm not sure as far as why Ono Ranch Road.
Yeah, I would expect the testifier to answer to that question. Mr. Pern?
It's quite challenging.
Zendo, could you turn your camera off, maybe? I understand.
It's quite, it's quite, quite, quite challenging. It just doesn't seem right.
And having lived there as long as you have, where is the closest fire hydrant or other fire facility?
I've never seen a fire hydrant up there, Commissioner.
Have you seen any on Mau'ohoa?
You know, um, I'm not sure.
That's okay. You're not expected to know exactly where the fire hydrants are. You don't need to answer that. Commissioner Van Pernas?
Yes, um. First of all, isn't it true that your neighbors have the right not to agree or oppose?
Mark, could you please take off your mask and grab your microphone? Thank you.
Thank you. Your neighbors have the right to oppose your application or not talk to you, right? They don't have to agree or compromise with you?
Of course, of course they have that right.
All right, thank you.
Our point is that this commission will understand that they have in front of them a community, a community member, a small business owner, someone who is trying their best to make it in Hawaii.
best to make it in Hawaii, and they have, on the other hand, a handful of people in opposition, um, in opposition to that just because they don't want it. So of course they have the right to oppose it, but you also have the right to decide what's the best for our community, and I'm hopeful that you'll find a favor of us.
And, and isn't it, you, you asked, what else could you do? Well, the answer is obvious, improve the road. That's where the opposition is based. Why don't you agree to improve the road?
With all due respect, Commissioner Van Pernas, I would love to do that. Since we've moved in, we have wanted a road maintenance agreement so that we can improve the road. The problem is, is that the neighbors want to-
I'm talking-
Neighbors who are in opposition to this?
I'm talking about you improving the road, not a road maintenance agreement.
Right.
That would involve everybody, you would have to pay for your excessive use of the road.
Yeah, so to be clear for one second, what I'm talking about, again, to reiterate, is 40 cars a week. That is not extensive use of the road. We and every other coffee farm on this road have 20-plus pickers every single picking day. We pick three or four days in a row every two to three weeks. So all of the properties on this road who grow coffee have more cars than this proposed use would even be. This is a very small amount of cars, but I do agree with you, it is more cars than we are currently using, and it is, would require us to do more road maintenance, and we are open to doing that. We would love to sit down and talk to the neighbors. I had talked to Zendo, maybe we take $100 or $200 off of every event and put it in a fund for road maintenance. Maybe we can do, you know, certain amount of mowing or repairs the road. The issue is, it's hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to widen the road. Not only that, we don't own the road. We don't have permission to widen the road. We can't do those things unilaterally. Would I be willing to do a lot of maintenance? Yes, I'm begging you guys to ask me to do that. If you will approve it, and I can do that, I will do that. I will do anything.
If you are, Zendo, ask the-
Commissioner Van Pernas.
Is there a right to improve?
Mr. Van Pernas, you cut her off, and so it wasn't clear-
I thought she was done, and she's-
Can you please finish your last question, please?
Okay, I will. If you, Arzendo, approached the other easel holders, the landlord, with any plan for your, I'm talking about your, not association, your improvement of the road.
We have approached them many times.
We would love to have that conversation. Yeah, no, I just, we're saying the same thing.
Have you approached them?
Yes, Commissioner Van, Commissioner Van, Commissioner Van Pernas.
Noriko, could you please mute? Go ahead. Um, I don't know, Mr. Van Pernas, I'm hesitant to go to you. I haven't really appreciated your line of questioning today, so I'm not sure what you have to say at this point, but.
Mark?
If there was an increase in cost over the period of time when Pacific first built, that increase over five or 10 years or more was something that Diamond assumed?
Yes.
I think we can all agree that's a true statement.
Yeah. Chair. Can we move on, Mark? Is there something else that you don't already know that we can maybe find out from these folks?
Well, if you let me finish, um, your application referred to the feasibility study as the reason why you wanted another delay. But then all these things, the costs of the time involved and the grades and, well, I wouldn't, did you assume that risk?
So I don't know what you mean, Commissioner, about application with regard to the feasibility study. There have been a number of reasons why there have been a delay. Sydney initially spoke to some of the corporate changes. They went public in 2013, they went private in 2016. That's what happens in a corporate environment. Sometimes there's a change of controllers to assets. There were changes in terms of construction costs and what was feasible, certainly. We had agency issues, so there have been a number of reasons why there have been delays outside of just the initial acquisition and the risks we took on at that time.
Going public to private and when and how much you credit is something that they damaged control, right?
Uh-
No one forced them to go private or prevent them from getting credit whenever they thought it'd be a good idea.
I don't think that decision is under, in any one person's control. That is a larger decision that I can't speak to.
Well, of course. I don't mean to interrupt. If I interrupt, um, please let me know.
Okay, can we move on? Do any other commissioners have questions?
There are several other questions.
Well, Mark, we need, we can't just go on and ask 20 questions when there are other commissioners who might have questions as well. They might have one or two.
Well, they might have one or two to hear the answers. Now, the cornering your neighbors got 15 years of nothing, and you want another five years. No curb, scare, sidewalk, broke one of the sub-sanated roads even though they're heavily used by walking traffic. Is the applicant willing to install the sidewalk and other related improvements if this matter is further delayed?
Commissioner, you're speaking to the current condition that's already part of the prior approval? Yes, certainly, certainly.
You're willing to use that right away?
I can't, I can certainly go back to the client. I can't commit to a particular date right now.
You know, like normally, if I might, yeah, normally, like, uh, off-site infrastructure improvements are done in conjunction with the project itself for a couple of reasons. One, it relates to cost, and the other one is that if you make this off-site improvements and then you're going to bring in heavy equipment that's going to result in the destruction or the relocation of the improvements that were already made, somehow it just kind of like doesn't make sense. And that's the reason why in the original condition, which I think is a wise one, is to time the completion of these improvements in conjunction with the, any use of the property.
So you built the underground garage and the foundation, but you don't want to build anything that might help the public, like, um, the roads and sidewalks that you otherwise require to build? Is that right?
Yeah, the project is-
Can I speak?
The project, obviously, is like far from completion, um, and, Madam Chair, like, if I might want to make a, you know, like, a request, maybe, of either you or your council, uh, you know, I'm just trying to see where some of these questions are leading to as it relates to the, the, the guidelines and the objectives of the SMA.
I understand, yeah. And I, I wanted to comment because I, I thought the same thing that you did, Mark. I thought, why wouldn't they be doing this sidewalk ahead of time to benefit the community? But if you think about what Max said, and if you think about the logistics of building this project, you don't want people walking directly in front of it, underneath it. They need to have that space to work.
But, can I stop?
Now, don't interrupt me, Mark. Please don't interrupt me, and I'm moving on.
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
No, I'm moving on to other questions. Mike, go ahead.
I have two more amendments I plan on offering, and I'd like to question about that, since you cut me off.
Since I cut you off? Sure, go ahead, Mr. Van Pernas.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I think so, go ahead.
Paul Manui claims I am biased against our current application.
And you responded, and they didn't rebut that, so?
Excuse me?
And you responded, and they are not responding, they're not, not fighting your response.
Okay, I want, in addition to my response, that there is no proof whatsoever of illegal or factual-
You speak up a little bit, I'm, I don't know about everybody else, but I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Can you hear?
Yeah, just speak as clearly or, and loudly as you can, please.
All right. There is no legal or factual proof of my bias and temporary against our application. Even if there was, what's more important is that bias is not, is not, it's basis for disqualification. If it was, then, for instance, Commissioner Batuzik, who is well-known for his bias in favor of archaeological and historical information, he had a quote, he presented it with- Now, can you hear me?
That's better, thank you. Thanks, Noriko.
Uh, Mr. Batuzik, who has a well-known bias in favor of archaeological and historical features, would be disqualified from hearing any applications concerning that have that subject matter involved. Commissioner Yates would be disqualified because you're biased against seeing more traffic in Kohoa or access traffic. Commissioners who are in favor of more jobs and construction would be disqualified from any application that involves jobs or the lack of them. Um, for instance-
Mark, excuse me, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I, I think we're good to proceed. Nobody is, is pushing back on the fact that you say that you can be fair and unbiased. So can we go ahead and proceed with the agenda item?
Yes, I can be fair and unbiased. I want to add that these documents I referred to sought to enforce the original application in a, in a particular condition, which I've since learned is still on the table. And, um, I learned that in Mr. Ye's recommendation, and I also want to point out that these writings are several years old and, uh, are within my rights of free speech. I think it's, uh, reprehensible that the applicant will challenge that.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Um, when the first ordinance was approved, uh, did Paul Manui have the money to keep their promise to build in five years?
When the last zoning amendment was approved, which some of you maybe remember was way back in 2009, uh, we did extensive, uh, you know, planning and, uh, and design work after that, and, uh, we then made the commitment. This was, um, this is, you know, not something I'm making up, it's in the, it's, it was widely covered by the media. We presented a $9.6 million check to the university, um, of, uh, in order to facilitate the construction of the university campus. We also put in a $5.5 million road, um, to go from Kaimeanani to the campus. We put in a $11 million water system, uh, and a couple million dollars for electrics. That's $22 million. So I think you could probably say that, yes, we have the money to do that, because we did that. We did exactly what we had been asked to do, uh, by the community, by the county, and the fruits of that are, you have kids right now going to college on the west side that used to be going to school down in Kiaiakua in a, in an old, uh, in a shopping center. And, uh, and so, you know, if, if you, if you're looking, uh, Chair, if you're looking, Commissioner Van Pernas, for somebody to give you some input on whether this was a, a good thing for the community, on whether this was a good thing for the students, on whether this is a good thing for the university, uh, then you can, you can hear it from me. But I would suggest that maybe you might want to ask somebody from the university system that question. Thank you.
That begs the question, that does not answer the question. The question is not whether you spent all this money on college, which I understand. The question is, when the original ordinance was passed, did you have the money to build the community that you're seeking permission for now? Or did you have to go find an investor?
Um, Mr. Van Pernas, I, I find that somewhat irrelevant. That's not what's on the table in front of us at this moment, so I'd like to move on.
Well, let me explain the relevance.
Uh, Mr. Van Pernas?
They're speculating, they're speculating on the future.
Noriko, will you please? Thank you.
Question then is, what is the, what is the purpose behind?
Can you answer my question first?
Well, he, Mark, let him speak.
Well, okay. I think I mentioned, I cannot make that commitment, you know, because, uh, you know, we're, we are not authorized to do that. Um, I mentioned also that if that were like, uh, a request, then it's something that I would probably not recommend, you know, that the owner accept. Alternatively, I've asked, uh, what I wanted to find out was, you know, and maybe the owner might consider it, but the question is the nature of the request. Why is that request being made? Is there a lot of foot traffic in that area that's been created by the project or, uh, that is existing condition that the developer has created, create this kind of safety hazards?
Mark, would you like to respond? You're, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Um, the, in response to your question, let me say that the developer has done nothing for the public for 23 years and now ask for another five years. The public walks in front of this project, both tourists walking into town and locals walking out to the beach, and it's a liability issue for the county because there's no safe walkway there. They can't walk on the other side of the road because of existing walls and lack of setbacks. So this is a small contribution to the public where the developer has done nothing for 23 years. And, um, I think you'd know that if you didn't live in Yale and were familiar with Kaukona. And, um, I note that the developer has not produced a single person or entity to testify in favor of this project while there is lots and lots of public testimony universally against it. So my best answering your question, yes, there's a problem there, and that's why condition four was, uh, included, and I'm just asking for a temporary inexpensive ass will driveway that can easily be destroyed once construction starts, and, um-
Okay, I, I, Commissioner Van Pernas, I, I think I have a better understanding. Um, I would like to only like suggest that, you know, we're already proposing a condition that the developer submit a site maintenance- that the developer submit a site maintenance program to address like the homelessness, the litter, the graffiti, so on and so forth. And if it ties in, like if the need to get like a good maintenance program, you know, security and otherwise, if that program calls for like making that interim improvements, then so be it. It's something that's got to be reviewed by the owner and eventually vetted and accepted by the county.
Thank you.
So, the answer is, no, you're not willing to commit now.
Yeah, I cannot make that commitment on now. On the other hand, if that is like, you know, it's a condition that we're proposing about the applicant coming forth with a site maintenance program to address the homelessness, security, so on and so forth. If one of the mitigations that's accepted or that's required by the county planning department in its review of the applicant's site maintenance program calls for the interim improvements, then that is the thing that they have to do.
Well, you're asking this planning commission for certain things right now, but you're not willing to commit to give the public any benefit right now. Is that right?
All I'm saying is that, you know, like neither, you know, Mr. Yoshimoto nor myself can make that commitment for the owner as far as making that interim sidewalk improvements. We're not saying, however, that that cannot be part and parcel of the eventual site maintenance program that gets reviewed and vetted by the county planning department.
I'm talking about separate from that maintenance program. So, let me ask.
Because it's tied in, the maintenance program is tied into security and safety.
Well, the homelessness problem is not going away. It's not going away at this location and as an expense on the county and other taxpayers involved. Let me ask you, what in 23 years, as the developer or as predecessor, done for the public of Kona other than create a useless concrete monasterity which depreciates the value of Kaukona?
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Not very productive, but let's move forward.
And the fact that the planning department accepted this, well, accepted is a strange word, but accepted this application, but as it's testified today, did not look into at all.
Okay, Mark, I feel like we're being repetitive here. We've already talked about this and we've moved past this.
Well, we have.
So, we're working on the...
I think that we have to consider...
Mark.
This application is totally...
Noriko, can you mute him, please? Thank you.
I don't think this is an area that the planning department should be getting into and monitoring.
Nor should the commission.
Correct.
Thank you. We're not going to talk about it anymore, Mark. Go ahead, Max. Go ahead, Max.
I don't know if Barbara was ahead of me or not.
Mr. Kern.
It's okay. Noriko, can you mute him, please? Thank you. Go ahead, Max.
Thank you, Madam.
Before we move on to approve the minutes, unfortunately, I find the need to say that I want to apologize to my commissioners and to the county and to the applicant. It's very unfortunate that I need to get to the point where I mute a commissioner. It's embarrassing to me that I have to do that. It's unfortunate. And it's inappropriate that it gets to that point. So, I would just ask the commissioners to remember to listen to the chair, whoever it is. It's not going to be me after today. And, you know, if I ask or the chair asks to move on from a topic or to don't interrupt or to, you know, keep to questions and not comments or whatever it is, to be nice, I think that we all have to remember to do that. So, I'm sorry to have to bring this up, but I think it's important that we all remember that we're here to serve the county and the community and not to argue and make things difficult. So...
I don't begrudge these people their subdivision, but why did the county planning department not know or not realize on their own that access from Mauna Loa was impossibility and had to be eliminated?
Thank you, Mr. Van Pernas, Director Kern here. I'll take the question. We do not have the access or the data. I'm sure we have the access to it. We don't have the data to tell you what, how many homes are built up in there. So, we're not going to be able to provide that with you today. There was a history that Ms. Camaro did lay out on why that driveway was allowed there at the time. And at the time, it was an agriculture driveway based on agriculture use. Currently, we're reviewing it as it is now with the favorable recommendation with the conditions that are present.
Very good, but it doesn't answer the question of why didn't the department review the increased traffic on Mauna Loa and originally make a recommendation of no access from Mauna Loa for this residential subdivision when, instead of waiting for the state to point it out? And it also pointed out that there's been two, maybe three, traffic studies on Mauna Loa since this 2005 or 2004 approval. Why weren't those reviewed?
It seems to me that the department got that information in time and they amended their recommendation in time to provide the recommendation that they think is appropriate. So, we have votes in front of us and the recommendation is that all traffic come off of Mahalani Drive for now. So, you know, I think we're at a good place to continue discussion. Is there anything else? Yes, Commissioner Van Pernas?
I agree with you, Mr. Vatuzik. And I don't begrudge these folks the subdivision, but we rely upon a thorough investigation and informed recommendation from the planning department and the planning director, not from some state agency. So, I think there's going to bleed fail you.
Okay. So, Mr. Van Pernas, we send out an application to all the various agencies for their comment. We receive those comments and we put them into our background report and our recommendations. That's exactly what's happened on every single application over the last 20 years. That is exactly what happened here. Tracy has done an excellent job and the planning department tries our very best to meet the needs of our community and our applications. Thank you very much.
Yep. So, we got the, I think they got the recommendation right. You know, they've taken into account the effects. And, you know, I agree that sometimes it would be nice to have things a little farther in advance, but I think we got there at the end of the day. So, Commissioner Van Pernas?
Mr. Kern, is it the county's position at how much money an applicant has and how they spend it a reason beyond their control to get a time extension?
I'm not exactly sure if I understand that question, but when an application comes in for a time extension or even a new application, we assess it based on the merits of the application, the general plan, the CDP and every single element that goes into making a land use decision and base the recommendation on that.
Can you please answer the question of whether...
I'm working on understanding it.
The question is, a circumstance beyond the control of an applicant is required for a time extension, correct?
Circumstances beyond their control is a, yes. I believe that's, yes.
Are we still speaking about the application at hand? I just want to make sure that we're staying on track, guys. Are we referring to any kind of hypothetical situations or are we talking about this specific application?
Don't interrupt. I'm asking...
What was that, Mr. Van Pernas?
Don't interrupt, Ms. Jackson.
Mr. Van Pernas?
Commissioner Van Pernas, you're going to have to be more respectful to staff and to our preparation council. It is her duty to inform us of the agenda and that we're on track with Sunshine Laws and to be, you know, she's doing her job. And please be respectful. And if you'd like to direct something to her, please request from me to have the floor in order to ask a question of her. We have to follow the rules of order in this meeting and everything's got to go as the way it should, okay? Oh, Commissioner Van Pernas, final thought?
Yeah, this is a different matter. I'm not sure what category it falls under, but I think it needs to be brought up. We all may recall Mr. Kern as a private individual, being a spokesman represented for the Campbell, Tarson, Kalko property. My understanding, and I would like to be corrected if I'm wrong, my understanding that after Mr. Kern became the active planning director, he approved the subdivision of the property that was...
Commissioner Van Pernas, this is again not an agendized item. If you'd like to request something specifically to be included on a future...
I don't, it's also with Campbell. And it was discussed and represented that the public trial easement on property would be considered, Mr. Kern.
Maybe perhaps this would be something that the county can follow up with you independently of this because, again, this is not an agendized item, so we would be...
Well, let's agendize it for administrative matters then. Because Ms. Campbell, I understand, is also the attorney now.
We can work, hold on. We can work with staff to...
Well, this matter may not wait.
Cannot discuss this any further. Could you please mute Commissioner Van Pernas? Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Carr Smith, second by Commissioner Kialoha. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
Discussion on the motion. Go ahead.
I would like to make sure the conflict of interest issue of Mr. Kern concerning...
That is not related to the motion or you are welcome.
Agenda eyes.
Again?
Agenda eyes. I'm asking you to be put on the agenda.
I'm asking you to stop talking about something that's not on this agenda. You can work with the county staff to get this on a future agenda. Please go ahead.
I make a motion that Mr. Van Pernas is being repeatedly inappropriate. That'll be my last motion.
We've already got a motion on the floor relating...
I know, I know, I know. I'm being...
Can we have a vote on that? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Have a good day.
Oi, oi.
Oi, oi, you guys. You go running out of here, Nancy.
Aloha, everybody. Take care. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, guys, so much. Bye.